Good evening, I'd like to call to order the North Canton City Council Meeting Monday, September 11th, 7:00 PM. Opening prayer Pastor Jig Tovisi, Canton Baptist Temple. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me tonight and I want to first declare the fact that our, the word of God calls us to pray for our leaders. It says in First Timothy, Chapter 2, "I exhorte therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, and recessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all therein in authority, that we may lead a quiet, peaceable life in all godliness and honesty, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the freedom that we have in the United States of America. And Lord, as we gather on this Monday night, September 11th, we recall to our minds 16 years ago when we were attacked in New York City and we actually thank you, Lord, for the safety that you've given us over the last several years and no attacks have happened on U.S. soil. We pray for those that are defending our nation today, for their protection, we pray for their families as well, that you protect and keep them safe as their loved ones are keeping us free here. We're thankful for our city, the city of North Canton, we're thankful, Lord, for how you've watched over us in times of good times and times of struggles. And Lord, now as we're transitioning into new era in the city with things happening and things changing, we ask your blessings upon it. We're thankful for each of these men and women who have given their service to our city. They come from different backgrounds and different mindsets, but Lord, they come for the benefit of our city. So we lift them up in prayer as well. And we ask your blessings now upon this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Soretta.
Here.
Foltz.
Here.
Fine Tate.
Here.
Griffith.
Here.
Keesley.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And Waren.
Here.
Seven Presidents, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for your consideration. A motion is second to approve as presented in Council meeting minutes, August 28th, 2017. Special Committee of the Whole meeting minutes, October, August 28th, 2017. And a new liquor license permit to Family Dollar Stores of Ohio Incorporated doing business at its Family Dollar, 8362-700-North-Maine Street, North Canton, Ohio, 44720. Motion to approve as presented. Second?
Foltz.
Yes.
Fine Tate.
Yes.
Griffith.
Yes.
Keesley.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Waren.
Yes.
And Soretta.
Yes.
Seven yes to approve the above permit and minutes.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address. And I'm sorry, for the record, there's some new folks in the audience, if you plan to speak tonight, there's a five limit, five minute time limit, and you'll see it on the screen. Floor's yours.
Good evening, good to be with you again. I'm like a bad penny, can't get rid of me. My name's Amel Greterson, address is 10988 Sagebrush Avenue Northeast, Uniontown, Ohio. The Associate Pastor at Holy Cross Lutheran Church was with you at your last meeting, St. Ludo offered the prayer. And I am just here tonight, hopefully you saw the goodies in front of you. I've been a pastor for about seven years now, and one of the things that I have always appreciated was when people recognized how difficult it was to be in the position I was in and to make the kinds of sacrifices that I make and make the kinds of decisions that I've had to make, some that were unpopular, some that were wrong when I look back. No doubt you will have some unpopular topics and decisions that you need to make, no doubt that you might look back at some point in the future and go, wow, that wasn't the right call. But you have put yourselves out there to be servants to the community, and we just wanted to say thank you for that and for your willingness to serve. So, again, my offer stands, if there's anything at all that I can do for you, you know, I am happy to be your pastor if you have a home church and you don't feel comfortable going to your pastor about something, if you don't have a home church and you need somebody to talk to about anything. I am bound by my ordination vows to keep things confidential, and so I am happy to be of service in that way, or any other way that you might think of. So, thank you again for your service, and I won't be able to stay with you tonight, I am heading out of town, so I won't be able to catch up later, but hope to see you again sometime soon.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's a tough act to follow, I didn't bring goodies for anybody. And I only planned for three minutes, so. My name is Jill Kirsch, my address is 948 Pontius Street Northwest, Hartville, Ohio. I operate Cripple Creek Ferals and Friends, and I left some information for some of you, I didn't bring enough for everybody, I thought there were only eight. I operate Cripple Creek Ferals and Friends, a registered nonprofit dedicated to the trap, neuter, and return of stray and feral cats. Trap, neuter, return is the process of trapping, spaying, neutering, vaccinating, and returning cats to their home environment. They're also marked with an ear tip where the tip of their left ear is removed to show they have been fixed. Since the inception of Cripple Creek in 2011, I personally have trapped 1,089 cats, with a large percentage of them residing within North Canton. This number does not include cats that have been trapped by other TNR trappers or their caretakers, many of which are sitting in the audience tonight. I don't like the, don't like to use the term feral cats because most cats that you will encounter are not truly feral, and that term can be deadly if they are taken to a shelter or if that term is used by citizens filing nuisance complaints. Community cats is a more appropriate term and encompasses all cats stray, feral, or lost. I've presented you with information on how and why trap, neuter, and return is a humane and effective approach to the issue of community cats, as well as material on why trap and kill or remove is ineffective and results in a vacuum effect attracting more unaltered cats. I've also included a copy of Sebring, Ohio's ordinance. You will notice that there are amendments marked in red that exclude community cats from the ordinance, therefore allowing for a TNR program. I worked with Sebring City Council last year, but a little over a year ago, and successfully got them to adopt the amended version. It is my hope that North Canton will be open enough to read through the material and consider amending their current ordinance, which is very similar to Sebring's original one, regarding free roaming animals and ownership. I am more than happy to speak with you directly to answer any questions you may have, and attorneys from Allicat Allies in Bethesda, Maryland are willing to help draw up an amendment to suit your needs. Grants are also available to adopt a TNR program within your community. I'm aware that several colonies in North Canton have become an issue recently, even though these managed colonies have existed for many years. The cats in question have been fixed and vaccinated, and yet property owners are being punished. I speak from experience with trap, neuter, and return, and I have seen the results from it. Healthy vaccinated cats who no longer roam neighborhoods in search of females to mate with or males to fight with, marking behaviors cease and no new cats are brought into the equation. This, of course, reduces the number of nuisance complaints to your office. Caretakers are educated on the proper ways to feed and shelter the cats as to not encourage wildlife to the area. Keeping the cats discreet and areas clean are key, as well as feeding during daylight hours. Uneducated assumptions about community cats are that they are sickly, diseased, and aggressive. This could not be further from the truth. I thank you for your time and openness to further explore a humane solution to the community cats issue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not very good at this, but I'll try and get by. My name's Rosemary, and I live on Apple Grove Street in North Canton, have been a North Canton resident for, hmm, 20 years. Really love this town, I think every, we have the best police department around, and I think we have one of the best council people around. But I am a little bit prejudiced, I guess. I would like to speak to the deer population up on North Main Street. I have been in contact a few times with the mayor in regard to my concerns last winter, before last winter started. I'm concerned about people being concerned about their living there and people feeding If some people last winter had not gone to feed them, and I'm talking to families, they still had white spots on them last winter, they would have died. Their skin draped over their ribs and their bones, and if they had not fed them, they would have perished and died. The people of North Canton who choose, and they choose, to go there to feed those deer are rewarded a thousand times fold. Children that go there with their parents to watch them feed the deer will get little apples in between the fence pieces. Their parents tell them about the deer and how beautiful they are, and everybody just is astounded that they're there. And I don't think anybody has any idea how much pleasure those deer give people every single night. I know there's concerns, and I've heard rumors about concerns, about the Stark County Health Department saying, oh, there's too much food on the ground, we're gonna, it's gonna attract rats, it's gonna get raccoon, well, I'm sorry, but there are raccoons that live in there. Raccoons are a forest dwelling creature. They're gonna live there, whether there's food out there or not. I have been there enough times in the evenings and during the day where people have fed those deer, and there is not one iota piece of food left on that ground when I leave at night, not one piece. So there is no food for the rats to come and get. If they wanna talk rats, I suggest they conduct some investigations into some of the businesses around that area where the deer live, in their dumpsters. And for instance, I have been by Pizza Hut, I can't tell you how many times, when their itty bitty little dumpster is all over the ground. If we're gonna talk about rats, that's gonna attract a nice big population. And quite honestly, if it wasn't for the three feral cats that live in the woods up there, they would probably be there. And there are feral cats that live back in there, in the woodpile, where you can go by wood, that's nothing but a rat infested place for them to hide. And I'm telling City Council that they really need to think hard about making any decisions about that. When I spoke to Mayor Halden, he was very patient and very kind with me, to talk to me about this issue before last winter rolled around. People go there to take pictures through the fences, they think it's astounding that they're there, and you really need to think about it. It gives people pleasure, and I'm telling you, especially this week with the hurricane coming and the devastation in Houston and Texas and Florida now, there are things in this world that give people a little pleasure, and those deer give people a lot of pleasure. So don't take something away from them and punish them, and don't punish the deer. They love those deer. So think about it before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Melanie Bromson, I live at 1848 Beechwood, and I'm here to talk to you about these guys today. And to speak specifically about the trap, neuter, return program that Jill has been involved with. I came home from work about four years ago, walked out onto my porch and saw mommy cat and six, six more baby cats. And shortly after that mommy cat had five more cats. And they are relatives of the cats that are behind Pizza Oven and that are being, you know, displaced. And I think from these pictures, if you want to pass these around, I eventually adopted two of them, and I still care for some of them, and I think you'll see that they are very loving and warm, and it breaks my heart to think that someone would want to try to move their family. Since Jill and some of the people in my neighborhood have come through with the trap, neuter, return program, we have had no new cats. The cats are well cared for, they are vaccinated against rabies, other diseases, if they get hurt or sick, they go to the vet, just like the cats that live indoors, and they've even gone for dental exams, which these guys haven't had, some of, some of the actual outdoor community cats. Because of this relationship now, I have also been up in Kmart and also seen the deer, and I can tell you again that I've spent enough time up there to see, I understand there's traffic up there with people coming and stopping and standing and loitering, but there are so many parents up there bringing their children to, to see the deer, to feed them, and these are people that like go out of their way to go buy feed and haul it up here from Uniontown and Jackson and different areas, they're coming here, and they, they love it, and I, and I just can't believe that we don't wanna get rid of something that makes our community so nice. So, that's Tiny and Little D, by the way. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mel.
We have one extra person, I have a 402 Adena Street, I have a couple papers there. I'll come on behalf of the residents of Adena Street with the noise that's being emitted from Control Powers during their night shift and during their day operations. So I'm asking, see if council, I've talked to Mark Johnson about this noise ordinance, and he didn't, nothing came about of it, so I wanted to address it to City Council, see if there's anything that they could do, see if we could actually have them to shut the doors during their times of operations. Because we, we believe that Control Powers is a violation of section code, or code section 1139 point 11, and that's pretty much stating that any noise being emitted louder than average traffic noise is a violation, and I know that Control Powers is light industrial, but I got a couple of sound clips, so you guys can hear the noise. This noise during the day, it's just the press that they run, they, they don't run it continuously, but they run it majority of the time during the night, and they run it throughout the day, at different times. This is again, the same practice. This is at night time. This is at night time, you can also hear a sound machine that we have running for our two, two kids in the middle of the night, our windows are closed, and the sound, the pounding, is actually louder than the sound machine.
Was that in your house? You took that?
That was in the house, yeah. And, let's see. Where are you hearing that from? This is from Control Powers, this is from our house, we're on the corner of Adena and Taft. So, and this is just like an intercom, the average, the, just the normal business sounds they have, just, is just coming through. On your piece of paper, we highlighted, or we circled some houses, we, me and my wife actually walked down to these residents to see if they could hear the noise themselves, and the houses that we stopped to, they all admitted that they could hear the noise, even all the way down to Parishing and Parish in Adena. And so we were just seeing if there's anything City Council could do and just see to help the residents out there. And another issue I wanted to bring up is the parking issue with the trucks. Some of them have common carriers, and mostly they're out of state or they're not local. They will park along paths, and they will block residents' driveways. And I was seeing if City Council would be even consider putting up signs, no truck parking, so that it would help discourage trucks from parking there. My wife has actually had to ask City, ask these truck drivers to move their trucks a couple of times, so she'd just get out of the driveway. And I think this is a safety issue, especially if there is an emergency. I don't wanna have to have my wife sit there and go find somebody to move their truck so she could have somebody, so she'd get where she needs to be. So I feel that this is a safety issue, and I'm more than willing to sit down with any council member, I got plenty of videos, sound clips, I just, I just wanna see if there's something that we could do, and if there is something that we could do, how can we enforce this? That's all.
Here's my car. Are those doors open, is that what you're saying? That sound?
Yeah, they're, their doors are open. Most of the residents say that the noise is tolerable during the winter time, because they have.
What did you, you said the noise is? Tolerable.
During winter.
So, I mean, if they have the door shut in summertime, I mean, it'd be very pleasant.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald.
Chuck Osborne, 307 Perview Street Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I see by tonight's agenda that you guys earlier had approved the minutes of the August 28th City Council meeting. Can anybody here hold up the minutes that I assume you got in your packet? I take it nobody?
Say it again, Charlie.
Do you have the minutes, a copy of them, that I hope, that hopefully you have read before you voted to approve them? As many of you know, Mr. Foltz, maybe Mr. Soretta, Mr. Griffith, I'm not sure, certainly Mrs. Keesley, know that years ago, the minutes that you were about to approve at the next meeting were made part of the packet. That has stopped here in the last four or five years. I don't know why. Now, I was startled here, back, I guess, at your May meeting, to hear Mr. Soretta, and I think Mrs. Keesley, say you've never even read Planning Commission minutes.
I do.
Do you actually know what you're approving? Now, last night, I made a records request for a copy of the approved minutes for August 14th, which were approved at your August 28th meeting two weeks ago. They still aren't on the city's website. It takes about one minute to post those minutes. And I made a records request for the draft minutes for the 28th meeting. I haven't gotten them. So I don't know what has been approved, and I don't think they're, meet the, the code requirements, which says a clerk of council shall keep an accurate and complete journal of all proceedings of council. Again, years ago, the meeting minutes were more detailed than we're getting today. Mayor Halden, North Canton Mayor, is required by charter to attend the meetings. How do we confirm or verify that he's been to the meeting? Cause it no longer lists the rest of you who were at the deos here. Years ago, it would identify, Mayor Halden is here, City Administrator Grimes is here, Finance Director Brown, Law Director Fox. We're not getting any of that, you're stripping vital information out of these minutes. Now, I've talked to several of you about documenting attendance at council meetings of your fellow members. And we've had a council member here recently, I won't mention the name at the moment, I'll save that for another day, who just gets up and walks out during the meeting. Now, your elected representatives think you're here representing their interest, and you're here at the meeting, and you're getting paid. We're not documenting that individuals are just walking out and leaving in the middle of the meeting. And I wanna look at the August 14th meeting and see if it was noted that a certain council member, and by the way, this is a new phenomenon that had just started here recently. The way these minutes are being documented, you read them and you think, well, my council member was there for the meeting, what's, what's your problem? But the meeting minutes are not accurate, they do not comply with the charter. So I would like a copy of the meeting minutes, again, Mrs. Bailey. I am very disappointed in your lack of professionalism and the way you're handling your clerk duties. By the way, I also mentioned, I came in here several years ago with my wife to look at the council minutes, expect to see them all bound in those archival copy paper, numbered papers, they're just being printed on regular paper and stuffed into a file folder now. They're not being safeguarded in the vault. Does anybody know what's going on in the office? This is no way to run a railroad, I'll tell you. Thank you.
Larry Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. I vowed to my wife I wouldn't come and speak for a while because I was gonna let the, the candidates, the, you know, speak for themselves, but just choosing your words, I just had to come up. I just had to come and say what I'm gonna say. For you that not, don't know me, I've been critical of the unprofessionalism of our city council during the past five years. I've been outspoken, and I, I think rightfully so. So in reading a recent article in the Stark County Politico Report dated August 28th, I come across this, it's about Mr. Peters, our council president. He makes a Facebook's post, Facebook post, I'll read it. So someone sent this picture of Chuck Osborne to me today. He is videotaping a sitting councilwoman attending her daughter's home opener soccer game. I'm assuming he's angry that she had the audacity to attend her daughter's soccer game instead of a committee meeting last night. Not surprised that he only employs his bully tactics on the female members of council, though. You're welcome. Moral to the story, if you ever think your life stinks, just remember, you are not this guy. Wow. And I say wow. A double wow. This comes from supposedly a professional. A city council president. Terrible. Absolutely terrible. Is that a lie? Huh? I, I called you out, and when you called all politicians thieves and crooks and criminals, and you sat there and laughed, and I read it in the minutes the next week. But that's fine. Terrible. And you, as city council, condoned this conduct. Then, to top it off, I read in the crime report of the repository for the city of North Canton as follows. "A Fairview Street Southeast man, 68, reported that a known suspect pushed his video camera out of his hand while the victim was recording the suspect and his wife at a high school soccer match. An investigation is pending." Huh. Wonder who that could be? Just wonder who that might be. But anyway, you know, as we, these folks are taking you, City Council, down, they're taking the city down. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to the education system that educated you. Any high school or college that you may have graduated, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to the city to read a post like that. Terrible. Absolutely terrible. So, the moral to my story tonight, my speech, is we have an election coming. Citizens of North Canton, hear me. You have four votes to make. Kelly for mayor, Revo for council at large, Borden, council four, and Snyder in council three. And then, ladies and gentlemen, vote no on every charter member, I, I, on every charter amendment. Vote no. They're just an outlet for the ladies of this council not to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anyone else wishing to address council, please step forward, state your name and address.
I'm Susan Dukeman, and I live at 3775 Lakeland Street in Union Town, and I practically live in North Canton, but not quite. Mayor, President of Council, Member of Council. It's not easy being a public official. I've spent most of my life working at various levels of government, and I'm the policy wonk in the room, I think. I realize what difficult decisions you're going to have to make about the problem with, with the animals. And I will tell you this, if I had had a daughter, I would have wished that she would be like Jill Kirsch. She's dedicated, she's smart, and she knows what she's doing. You've got an absolutely wonderful resource here to help you formulate your policy on how you deal with this problem. And a good policy can reduce the number of complaints from more people standing up here addressing you about what are you going to do about this issue. I really encourage you, you've got a room full of experts here. I happen to have six cats, and I married a seventh, so we know a little bit about this. And it was Jill who helped us with this, so.
Sorry, George.
But we really do encourage you to look at the resources we have. If you go online, you're going to see the same concepts are proven by humane society after humane society on what to do with this population. And you know you can't kill everybody you don't like, and it's the same thing with, with the animals. So, limiting the procreation is probably the safest way. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Shar Gallagher. I live at 8062 Cleveland Avenue Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. I'm here to talk about the feral cats in area, but I want to tell you, I just came from feeding the deer at Kmart right before I came in. I was shocked when one came right up to the fence and refused to eat from what I threw over the fence. He wanted it from my hand. I put my fingers in through the fence, and he gently took my Burger King bun. I love those deer. They give me peace, joy, and it's better than going to the zoo. I've taken my son there, told him about the magical kingdom, and while I was there, there were three children that got out of a truck. Mom and dad watched as they hand-fed the deers. I don't think it gets any better than that, especially in this world we live in today. We need that peace of mind to know that there's something good and happy and very close to us that we can reach out to. And I also looked at the ground, and there wasn't food left all over. As Rose said, those deers eat it up. So I would ask you to reconsider about that deer population. They are as harmless as a dog or a cat. I was shocked when they took the food right out of my hand. That was the first time. And as far as Jill and her rescue, I have one of her feral cats that I took in six years ago. I didn't know Jill. She was a friend of a friend of a friend. It's been the best thing that ever happened to me in my life. I know her tireless devotion, dedication, and selflessness. I've known her to be out, sitting, and trying to trap these cats to take them to one-of-a-kind bay, neuter, and return as late as 10 o'clock at night. I've never seen anybody like her. And as Sue said, if I had a daughter, I'd want her to be Jill. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address council? Seeing none, we will move on to old business. I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number 78-17.
So moved.
Second.
Fonte.
Yes.
Griffith.
Yes.
Keesling.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Waren.
Yes.
Saretta.
Yes.
And Foltz.
Yes.
Seven yes to read by title only, the second reading of ordinance number 78, 2017, and ordinance amending section 20, compensation of chapter 155, personnel regulations of Part One, Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton, in accordance with North Canton Ordinance Number 5, 2017, to rename the classification of Director of Promits and Development to Director of Community Development.
Thank you. Exactly as it reads, simply to reflect the changes in duties to that position. If there's no further comments, I entertain a motion and second to adopt the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Griffith.
Yes.
Keesling.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Waren.
Yes.
Saretta.
Yes.
Foltz.
Yes.
Fonte.
Yes.
Seven yes to adopt the second reading of ordinance number 78, 2017.
All right, thank you very much. Report, remember Fonte.
I just want to report that the roads are not complete, so we're ahead of schedule compared to the last several years. Also, we have two streets, I think, stripings yet to be done, East Hill and-
Orient. Orient.
Orient. Last two streets, okay? And if you notice, Glenwood are making good progress from Zimberditch all the way to the bridge with the Stark Parks Trail, which is a 10-foot wide concrete path that's really nice. Excited to use it. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Remember Waren.
Yeah, a couple things. The East Hill paving was completed and looks really nice. The perfect weather and the sun is setting, and it just looked beautiful out there the other day. So Rob, thank you, and I've emailed Rob a couple times, and Rob just gets back to you so quickly, and I appreciate that, and to community members, and it just, it, it's important we get back to people. In a couple weeks, we're going to be hearing more about field crest, so I did take the opportunity, and Tim helped me with this, but to the residents close to field crest, I did, there was a lot of confusion going on around in our neighborhood, so in Moncello, so I did send a email through our association administrator to those residents, kind of just background history, how it came to be when I was at the planning meetings, and what occurred, and some different things. So that's something you're going to see in the near future. Someone called me last week about the cell phone tower that we talked about last year at First Crest, and that recently we needed an easement for that property. So all, when we were going through that process, our planning council, or I guess it went through zoning, the zoning board said it was fine, it passed all of the regulations, except for the easement that needed to happen through Canton City. And that has gone forward, they were granted an easement, so that you'll be hearing more about that, and I'm sure there'll just be more to talk about that, but I did want to let you know about that. Tim, was there anything else about that, that just, just kind of a heads up that that will be coming, will come back to our, our group, but that it should go through relatively quickly because they did pass everything the first time around. And Jill, thank you for coming, I get the name right. So I work for Leadership Stark County, I'm the director, and we're always looking for people on our citizenship day that speak advocacy, and I'm already like, I gotta talk to you because what you do is important, and you're a true advocate, you know, for little things that don't have advocates always. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for all the people coming. It's nice to hear from so many members, and sorry about my call, I'm disrupting people's conversations for the fifth week. So, thanks for coming.
Remember Keesling.
Yes, just FYI, we have a CIC meeting next Monday night at 6:00. If anybody wants to join us, it's the first one this year. And as far as field crest, I think we are going to put on the agenda to start talking about it next week, so if anybody has any questions, anybody want to buy the property, anybody, you know, want to do any extra homework before you get here, plus, any information we can gather, maybe get all the commission minutes together and make them part of our packet this week. Hopefully that last set's done. I don't think they are, though. Maybe we can ask Linda to get that last set done. Right. But that was just-
I mean, not being on. Those two weeks ago.
Was, yeah, it was just a couple days ago, so they might not be done yet, but maybe gather all that, too. So, just FYI.
Remember Griffith.
Along those lines, I had the pleasure of attending the BZA meeting from last month, and Stephanie was there as well, and Jessica Strider was in the room, was also in attendance as a member, and I think it was an interesting process that was well done. We had some really good conversations subsequent to that with Tim and some other folks about just some ways to make the process easier for them to participate, a lot more user-friendly.
I think Tim tries to really guide them, to kind of say, you need to make this, 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 but even if there's ways beforehand.
Some big handouts. So, like, pamphlets along the lines of, so you've applied for, it's kind of, you know, one of those things. I think that's what we're talking about, too, so I appreciate the input, and I think we've got some good ideas. I talked to a couple members of the board as well about some things that could happen, so. Secondly, I just want to say a special thank to the administration. I think the new Facebook page for the city is fantastic, and it's a, you know, we are always concerned about, and hear legitimate complaints about how we don't communicate well enough, and we obviously need to do a lot more to continue to improve that. I'm reminded of that as I get a, excuse me, a call saying that, you know, next Thursday is Picture Day in Little School, so we're, you know, getting, as a parent, we need to. But I think the Facebook page is another really big step in the right direction, it's got a great tone to it, good information, and I'm glad to see a lot of people participating. It's been really helpful, so congratulations on the administration on that. Great, great thing. That's FYI.
Thanks. Remember Saretta?
A couple things. First of all, a lot of good, passionate people here. Good meetings, and I love to see, whether it's about cats or deer or council people you want to vote for. I mean, that's what you need in a community, is people to stand up and talk and give their views, and we really appreciate hearing about that concept. We don't get this many people, that's the most we've ever had, I think that's, that's one of the records here, I think. So, thank you, keep coming back. The other thing I really have is the, the guard shack, the Harris side got with me on that, they're getting ready to kind of rev up, to put stuff in the guard shack. They're going to put another light in there, we're going to help them put a light in there, they're going to, we're going to get cleaned up and painted on the inside, and it'll look, they're going to then continue to make it look like it was at one time. They have, we have the stuff downstairs, we took out of it. So that, I just want to say, the progress of that is coming along. They haven't forgotten us, and they keep contacting us, and there's a couple of things we're going to do for them with electric to put in there, and they're going to put in the lights, and they're going to put in a fan. So, you'll probably see some people working out there, if you're wondering why, that's why. They're going to put some panels in there showing the history of North Canton, and the light will shine through on those, so that's kind of the part of the plan for the guard shack. So that's really all I have. I see.
Thank you. Mr. Foltz?
Thank you. Thanks to administration, I see the speed limit signs are up on Portage and working. So, well done there, and after that for a while, as everybody knows. Well done, right here at Charlotte, Portage, and we have additional, just 25 mile, speed limit signs put up, too. I think our own Parkview, you know, and so, I think it's a nice setup. Hopefully, we'll get people slowed down and adhere to the speed limit. I'm ready, monitoring traffic, and I think it's working so far. Anywhere in the city, it's nice, because you, sometimes you don't realize how fast you are going, so I think it's nice. Pat, do you know when that kicks on, is it like 100 feet before the sign, or?
Yes, it varies by location.
Right.
And in some areas where we have a bigger straightaway, we can increase it to, you know, probably 100 yards or so.
Okay.
But the one where you're at is, is probably about 50 yards.
50 yards?
Yeah. We catch that turn coming off of Pittsburgh onto that, and allowing people to kind of get up to the speed before we, we felt that if we pushed it too far down that way, and as they're coming off of Pittsburgh, they're not really at the proper speed yet that they think they should be at. And it's not a lot of value telling them that they're going 20, and they're revving up, so we want to let them-
Sure.
-get to what they think the proper speed is, and advise them they're not at the proper speed.
Thanks, thanks for getting it done, appreciate council support, and the residents who really were spiritifically there that live in that neighborhood, so, thank you.
And I've noticed an increased usage in the mobile trailer unit as well, the speed unit, that's very helpful. I've come across that three, four different times, and I've realized that I'm going faster than I thought. So, and it's a good reminder, so please pass along, we thank them for, for their efforts. And also, I want to thank all the folks that came up tonight advocating for the cats and the deer. I've spoken with Rosemary at least a handful of times, and we've talked about it, I've taken my kids up there to feed the deer. We love them as well. So, and Jill, thank you for your good work. If we could get your information, is there a con, if it isn't here, okay. I was going through it too fast, so. Okay, I appreciate it. But thank you again for your good work in advocating for those that can't advocate for themselves. Appreciate it.
Director Vla?.
Yes, sir. To assist, hopefully, some of the members that came this evening to address council, just a reminder on the roles of elected officials, that if you wish to change laws, introduce new laws, or change the ones that we have, or remove the ones that we have, that is absolutely the city council member's role. So if you want to change something, add, these are the folks to see. If you wish to enforce a law that we already have, council is prohibited from doing that. That entire role is to administration. So for, for noises, for block parking, those types of things, city administrator. They absolutely will be done, heard, the quickest amount. If you go to a council member, absolutely that council member from your ward or at-large will go through administration, so it'll speed it up a little bit forward for you. Absolutely support TNR programs. I have had- Absolutely support TNR programs, I have had four cats, each one of those were rescues, I've seen that program work in a number of places and that's absolutely something that would require amending our laws. So lobby your council members. I can't change that for you, I will absolutely support it, but those are the ones that will make that type of decision. So absolutely thank you for coming this evening and speaking, bringing a packet, having the forethought to show legislation that puts it into place, that really helps it move through that process. They say changing government is like steering an aircraft carrier. It gets done, it just takes a while and the reasons for that is that legislation through the normal process takes time, so members of the community understand what's happening, they can come out as you did this evening to speak and to lobby members for things that you wish to push forward. So those of you that are behind this, these are the folks to see, as I said, I'll do everything I can to help, but direct your efforts there, see this side, the mayor, the administrator for enforcing those rules.
That's all, thank you, Ted. Director Finance?
All right, I have four items for you tonight because you know I love numbers, so we'll go four. The first one is Regional Income Tax Agency, RITA, who we all know and love, sent out letters to 1,278 of our residents today and those letters were for people that did not file a tax return. So you may start to get some calls, mayor as well. If they got one of those letters, it could be something as simple as somebody that retired last year and didn't have income and, you know, had filed in the past, so it could be something easy to straighten out. Could be somebody that, you know, earned income and just didn't file and either know about it or follow through on that obligation. So they do need to contact RITA to get that taken care of and we're going to put that specific contact information on our website in the next day or two for that collections department. So those letters went out today. Second item I have is our 2016 audit was released by the state last Thursday, that's on the Auditor of State's website, we're also getting that on our site. That audit was a clean opinion, it had no comments, no recommendations, so it was very good results and I really credit the finance staff for that because I was only here for part of 16, so they kept things going well during the transition between finance directors.
Laura, can I interrupt you just to say, this is the second thing we've had, we've had no comments, no findings in that audit, and that is extremely rare, so I think that's where I'd applause for.
Thank you. Number three, our city wellness program that has kicked off, we've had two of our three events, one was tonight at fire department, we signed up some of those folks. Last Thursday, we were down at service center signing up those guys and then this Thursday, we will be here at city hall. Any council members, mayor, if you'd like to sign up for the program, please come between 6:00 and 10:00 Thursday morning, we'll be right here in this room. You have to be fasting, so please don't eat for eight hours before, but we'll give you breakfast when you go. We're calling our program City Strong, I don't normally wear t-shirts to council meetings, but made an exception for tonight and we're trying to do some, just some rev up of the community of employees with that City Strong feeling. We came up with the name and got the t-shirt, Shannon and I, and then somebody pointed out to me, well, the schools have Viking strong and I hadn't really thought about that, but it's kind of a nice coincidence because, you know, maybe all over town, we're really going to have that feeling of moving North Canton forward and being strong, so I think that's a good thing. And that is a free program to our employees and partially grant funded, so that's a nice thing that we can offer to them. And then my fourth item, this is going to be the long one and the one with lots of numbers, so hang in there. Our insurance fund, for those that don't know, the city is self insured, which means that we pay a small premium to all care each month, but then the bulk of our cost is the actual claims. If I go to the doctor, which you can tell I need to today, then that actual cost comes back to the city and we pay those bills. This year, those claims have been very low, we've just been fortunate, we haven't had any major illnesses in our employee group, just great. But the fund that we have for a reserve to pay for those claims continues to grow. Part of the money in that fund is from other city funds, so general fund, street, water, all those pay in every month on behalf of those employees. Part of the money in that fund is employee share, so it comes out of all the employee paychecks that year. What I'm proposing that we do, because that fund has grown about $125,000 this year so far and looks to be trending that way, is in the month of December to do a premium holiday. So what that means is we wouldn't take health insurance out of the employees' check that month and we wouldn't take it out of the city funds that month. So we keep that fund kind of in balance, which is a good thing that we're in that fortunate position that we are. In doing that, it would save city funds about $87,000 for the month, it would save employees, a single employee would save them about $77, family about 200, so something a little extra towards the end of the year. We also, I'm meeting with our healthcare consultant next Monday to find out what bids have come in for next year's healthcare program. So if that would be bad news, we obviously could pull this back, but from everything they've told me, it looks to be good news. So that's excellent and hopefully the wellness program drives that even further into the positive. Anybody have questions on that, I know it's a little, little deep. Okay? Awesome, thank you.
Director Administration?
Yes, sir. First, we lost a city sign on Apple Grove near Pittsburgh today, a car ran into it, the people are okay, but the sign lost on Apple, so we'll have to replace that one. The street striping, like you mentioned, just so you know, they do the long sections first and then they'll go back and do the shorter crosswalks, so if you see some that aren't quite done yet on the crosswalks, they'll be getting them, but they like to do the long ones at night and when there's less traffic, you can get those out of the way. The speed limit on Portage Street, I happened to be with Chief Minock this afternoon and he let me know that they're going to do some monitoring and educating, they're not going to go out and, you know, start hammering people right away. We know it's been like that for a lot of years, they're going to, you know, just be out there but let people know that your hope wasn't changed. So I know on our Facebook page, we saw a lot of people concerned about that and the idea was not to raise money or do any of that, it's just for safety out there and that's the way they're going to approach it. And then the other thing I would ask your indulgence is just, it's September 11th and maybe a moment of silence to remember those 2,977 people that died, 6,000 that were wounded and all the brave acts that were done on that day if we could, sir.
Yes, I think that's a great idea, do that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thank you, Mike. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to thank all of you for coming here tonight. We have, this is a big audience and you know, one of the things that I appreciate most is for all of you that are here, for the feral cats and also for the deer, Rosemary, Jill and Susan and Melanie and all of the rest of you, I have never seen so much information, packed with so much about the feral cats. And I think it's great, I think it's fantastic because there was a number of years ago, we had a property and there was a farm and it was about 20 years ago and we had one cat that we had found at the barn, it was the only one, and shortly after that, she had a litter of kittens up in the attic of the house. And then about six months after that, three of the kittens had litters of kittens. So in less than one year, we had a total of 27 cats. And I didn't think that they, and there was only one known tomcat in the area, I think that's the term for it, right? And male cat, whatever the politically correct term is, but, and that cat just kept coming back and they, and they just, I've never seen anything like it where they kept reproducing. And then of course, we're scrambling, we're scrambling to find them homes, they were reproducing faster than we could find homes for them. And so it was a real challenge. The good thing was that we did end up finding homes for all of them, but that was like the first introduction that I had as far as, you know, the importance of neutering them and, or spaying them. And so I think this is a great program, I think it's really kind of new as far as, you know, the trap and the spay and neuter and the release, because I think that there was, and I'm just speaking from my own perspective, there was maybe not as much confidence that the program worked that well and, but this is, it's real clear, you have a lot of evidence that it does work because I was told, and this was not too long ago, that once, one of the, if the cats are removed from the area, that there's the vacuum and they just fill that area back with other cats and the cycle just continues. But if you spay and neuter the cats that are in that area, that it keeps other cats from coming in and you don't have an increase, which I think is a great concept. And I did talk with the, with our veterinarian down at Stark County about their spay program and I'm not sure if that's where you take the cats and the dogs. This is at the Stark, Stark County dog, she has an office down there. So she was, yeah. And so she was a real strong advocate of that program too. So I think a lot of it is just getting the word out and I know that all of our council people here are, they do a great job too, by the way, and I just appreciate all the work they're doing because it's not always an easy, easy time, just try to make as many people as you can happy. But one thing I must also say too, is how all of you conduct yourselves is very impressive because you're very passionate about what you believe in and protecting the animals and you're all so nice and polite about it. You've always been nice and polite, every time I've talked to anybody, you know, you always qualify everything that you don't want to create trouble, you just, you know, want to make a difference and we greatly appreciate that. So keep up the good work and if you're able to, those of you after the meeting's over with it, if you could stay and just maybe we could talk a little bit more about this program here. Get something on Facebook, let people know. And then as far as the Hoover property, Councilman Soretta and I believe all of the council members, Dominic had a chance to talk with Stu Lickler from IRG and if not, then they will be talking with him. And so the goal, when we looked across the street over at the Hoover company, it was not moving along as fast as we would like at all. And we certainly didn't like the dirt that's piled up out there and the inaction that was taking place. And so we had a, we had a meeting with Stu Lickler, I had a couple of meetings with him and then he also went with council members and Doris Spook with them over the phone. And we let him know that, you know, keeping the dirt piled up there is really a disrespect to the community. That building across the street there has been there for nearly a decade and it's been manicured and taken care of for decades, decades. And we don't want to minimize, I don't want to vilify anybody because they, IRG's Stu Lickler has done a fantastic job, a fantastic job of redeveloping that property and if it was not for him and his company, we would not have the 1,100 jobs that we have in there right now and our city would not have made a comeback financially like we have. So we were bringing in $7 million income tax back in 2000 and it dropped to 5.4 million. And now this year, I believe, or this last year was the first year we're back over 7 million. So I don't want to get extreme and, you know, in one sense, we were not happy with the front lawn and he had given us his word that he was going to take care of it and what they wanted to do was change their, change their approach, rather than doing the residential units first, right? They wanted to shift their resources to the retail first, which was the front lawn area and then that way they could get the parking lot taken care of, add the retail in there and then focus on the 130 units, correct? And so we were very pleased with that and he said that he would make that a priority and he said it wasn't his intention at all to be, to be disrespectful to the community or the people that live here or the people that have worked there, the generations of people that have worked there. But to us, you know, we take, we take that very personal because the Hoover company's been a tradition of excellence for over 100 years here. And so he gave us his word and his commitment that he would finish the parking lot and that he would put in the retail first, so we're really, really pleased with that. And so I think we, we're going to see positive things here at the end of this year and the beginning of next year with Pirate Stu Lickler and IRG. Then the next item we have, Jeremy, this issue was brought up a few years ago and I don't know if you lived in the house at that time. Really, I think what we can do is talk to Myers Control Power and in the winter, it seems, and I think you agree with this, that the noise problem doesn't seem to be an issue, right? When the garage doors are closed, but then when it gets hot out, they open up the doors and then they have that horrible screeching that you play and it's unbearable, there's no reason for anybody to have to go through that, nobody would want to go through that. And also with the trucks parking, I think that if we communicate with Myers Control, maybe put up some signs in that area, we can address that. Because I know that we've done that before as far as the noise and I think we can accomplish the same thing with that. So I know that we'll have Patrick and Mike Rhimes on our staff, they're going to look into that right away, okay? And thank you for bringing it up and also the recording too, because I did not sound pleasant at all. And if that's what you're listening to, there was no need, anybody to listen to that noise because it was just annoying listening to it in this council meeting for just a few minutes, a few seconds really. And the other item is we've got good news for those of you who wanted to see the Walsh University islands removed, we're going to, we're going to take the island out. And, you know, in design, it looked great, it looked great on paper and we were working with Walsh originally. The goal was to put in a Walsh University district to mark that area so that they could, people would know that they're entering the Walsh, Walsh area, you have a lot of college students going back and forth and crossing the street. So originally, we were going to put up the boulevard in the middle so that the students, so that it would look beautiful, but then also the students wouldn't jaywalk, so that they would have to be forced to go to a light because we didn't want any one of them to be hit, you know, by a passing car. The problem was though, is when we originally designed that, a fire truck couldn't make it down the middle lane because it was gone due to the, through the trees that we had placed there. So then we thought we was compromised and put four of them, two on each end, and this was the first one that was placed. And obviously it drew a lot of concern, we looked at the topography because you're coming up in a hill, the visibility was a problem. So we've talked with Walsh, we had Mark Soretta met with the representatives from Walsh, also Mike Rhimes and our city engineer, Rob, and so they collectively agreed that we would remove and this is in accordance with our president and so he wanted to pass this message along. This is Richard Gisome from Walsh. She said, "Wash University has always strived to be a good neighbor and a strong community partner within the city of North Canton. We support the city and their plans to remove the island in response to the needs and concerns of our residents. We also support any future street skate beautification initiatives by the city that would attract new business to the city, enhance our student experience and provide enjoyment and recreation for the residents and our community." And this is according to Walsh University President Richard Gisome. So I think we're going to, we're going to look to even better things to come because we've applied for grant funding with the state for our parks and also for redeveloping our gateways to the city, so we're feeling very, very good about this. So I think we're going to have much, much better things to look forward to in that area. And then lastly, we have the, you know, a few folks here for the cats and the deer, if you're able to, if you're able to stick around afterwards, because I think this information's excellent. I think we need more of it. My gosh, I think this is the thickest policy pack that I've ever seen since I've been in public service, so there's got to be good stuff, yeah. So thank you.
That's all. Thank you. Mr. Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things for you tonight. Our Price Park walking path, phase one, and also the Eastwood Tennis Court reconstruction, that's going to advertise for bid this Thursday and next Thursday and we scheduled a bid opening for right here on Friday, September 29th at 11:00. So we hope to get that in this year, but the one thing we have to avoid is the So we hope to get that in this year, but the one thing we have to avoid is the contractor removing, like, Price Park path, then the asphalt plant closes, so we don't have a path for all winter. So we'll sit down in the pre-construction meeting and be very clear that either get it all in, or we'll wait till spring. Four months without a path isn't going to fly, so we'll make that clear. Another project we're going to get started on, on two weeks from today, on Monday, September 25th, is the Park Avenue sanitary sewer replacement. That's a 700-feet sewer on Park between 10th and Hole. And that should take probably three weeks to a month, get that booked up, get that in this year. So, Mr. President?
Thank you, Director of Administration Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just first, I'd like to say that I'm going to attempt to do a concurrent consultation with the city council September 18th, on your next Committee of the Hole meeting, to talk about recreation rental facilities. And at the same time, prior to that, do a meeting with the Park and Rec Board of Canton. So the idea is to try to get you all the information that I've put together in trying to improve upon our recreational rental process. My intent is to preserve and protect city-owned facilities, provide for the fair and orderly reservation and usage of those facilities, and promote access for city residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations. So I want to lay it out to everybody all in the same day, and then start getting some feedback, and, you know, moving this thing along on what we're trying to accomplish. So you'll see that on your agenda next week. And there's a park board meeting next, Monday at 4:00 on September 18th. Facebook, we've got our second international like. So as you recall, we had Europe covered, the last meeting, we talked, and now we have South America. So appreciate all the likes that we're getting from around the world. Still, our number one post, for its reach, has been the improvements to the St. Paul's parking. That has reached just shy of 8,500 people. I think that as the St. Paul's community has shared that, it's been traveling around the world, and that's how we're getting some of these international likes. We are trying to get the word out on the speed devices that we've just installed. I want to thank Chief Minock and his department for programming all of these devices. And they will have, all the devices do have a feature in which just raw data can be collected, not individual data, not taking any pictures, won't know who drove by at any time of the day. But much like those cords that you would put across the street that records how many vehicles are traveling that road, and at what rate of speed in general those vehicles are going, all of those devices will have the ability to hold that data for about 30 days. And it'll be up to, if there's any concerns with speed for the police department to retrieve that, and it can simply be done by a drive-by. They don't even have to get out of their car, and they can pull up, pull up the data, and then they can bring it back here and analyze it, decide what they need to do. And that post was just made this morning on our Facebook page, and it's reached 3,700-plus people in just a few short hours. I think the word's getting out, something about that. I've also had the opportunity to draft, in conjunction with Facebook and the work that we're doing on the website development, to draft a social media policy. And I had the opportunity to review dozens of social media policies of cities across the United States. I've also relied on information from the Center for Technology and Government, National League of Cities, County Commissioners Association of Ohio, and the Policy Institute. The social media policy focuses around eight essential elements: employee access, social media account management, acceptable use, employee conduct, content, security, legal issues, and citizen conduct. And I'm pleased that the law director is taking it now from me to bring more up to speed. Typically, when you're doing this kind of research, you know, not all of it is the most current, and there's lots of casework, as the law director's pointed out to me, that has happened in the last few years concerning this. And so any draft that we would put together, it needs to be looked at with, you know, great eye for detail on what is presently happening. So I'll be assisting him in any way that I can to help him continue with his revisions of that, and hopefully, in the time, the short time ahead, we'll be able to get something to counsel on that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Patrick. Adam Clark?
Just a couple items. This Wednesday, the Civil Service Commission will meet at 8:00 a.m. to review the scores from the police lieutenant's exam. I'm happy to say all three of them that had taken the exam have passed, so that's great. Also, next Tuesday at 6:00, we will have our two exams for radio dispatch and the sergeant's promotional exam. So I will have those next Tuesday at the Civic Center at 6:00. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Final call to council for new business?
Just a meeting.
Meeting schedule. I do want to address this. Next Monday, we are scheduled, the 8th, September 18th, we are scheduled for a Committee of the Hole meeting. We're going to have some conflicts. Is there anyone that's, is there anyone opposed to moving that to Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. rather than Monday at 7:00 p.m.? If that's amenable to everyone, I need a motion, a second to do that. Motion to move the meeting to Tuesday. Can you please call the roll?
Kiesling?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Waren?
Yes.
Soretta?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fante?
Yes.
And Grippit?
Yes.
Seven yes to move the Committee of the Hole meeting to Tuesday, September 19th.
All right, thank you very much. So now that sets us up for Tuesday, 7:00 p.m., Committee of the Hole. And then Monday, September 25th, will be council meeting, and that will round out the month, and not on the agenda, but I can talk to it at this point. October 9th and the 23rd will be regular council meetings. And then we'll schedule committee as appropriate. So that completes the agenda. Okay, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Peters?
Yes.
Waren?
Yes.
Soretta?
Yes.
Folds?
Yes.
Fante?
Yes.
Grippit?
Yes.
And Kiesling?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.